I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for Wednesday, January 17th, 2024. At this time, we will ask our Assistant County Manager, Ben Warren, to lead us in the invocation.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and to conduct the business of Onslow County. God be with the commissioners in their deliberations and bless them with their wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. And Father, we also pray for our military and our first responders who continue to serve the country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May your blessings be upon us always, and we ask these things in your name. Amen. Now with deep respect, reverence for the faith, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. At this time, we would like the representatives from Onslow County 4-H, Ryan and Kennedy Youngren, to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan and Kennedy. You picked a good night to do it. You had a large crowd here tonight to get your nerves running a little bit. So we appreciate you being here tonight and being some wonderful young people in Onslow County. Elected officials tonight, do we have any here with us tonight? We do have always Alderman Rick Grant from North Topsail Beach sitting in almost the front row. I don't know that we have any others tonight. So we appreciate Rick being here. He's always a good part. And Mayor John Davis was here somewhere. There he is. Okay, I lost him in the crowd. So Mayor Swansburg, John Davis, is with us tonight as well. So I think we do have everybody covered. So we appreciate y'all being here tonight, and we appreciate the large crowd we have here tonight. So thanks for coming out. And we ask that all in attendance to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. With that being said, I need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Tonight's agenda has been adopted. Any Board members have any questions or concerns? Any items they'd like to pull from the consent agenda? If not, we need a motion for the approval of tonight's consent agenda.
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none. The consent agenda has been approved. So we will go to public comment. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have three speakers this evening. The first one is Bill Boone.
Good evening. I'm Bill Boone. It's been quite distasteful to attend meetings at our elected officials and watch the disparagement and contempt towards the people. Newly elected patriots who ran to serve and citizens who come before the boards to voice their concerns are ignored at best and if persistent in their questioning are attacked and vilified or censored in efforts to silence their voices. A recent school board meeting ended in chaos when a member in his prepared statement pointed at the parents as part of the problem. A question move at any time, but especially bad move when the room held the parents of the children involved in the recent shooting incident. I have attended meetings and watched the public reach out for help in voicing their concerns. I have never heard any comments or witnessed any action on any of the issues brought forth. Instead of answers or actions, we get carefully prepared statements that feel more like campaign speeches than comments on the issues at hand. You're our county commissioners, elected by the people to serve the people of Onslow. These are epic times with monumental changes on the horizon. 2024, this year, will be unlike no other we've seen. In your deliberations, have you discussed how to provide assistance to the people in our county in the event of societal upheaval or economic collapse? Are you even aware that this is a distinct possibility? Instead of millions for a swimming pool the people seem to have limited access to, how about providing instruction and resources for victory gardens and chicken coops? We are blessed in Onslow that even many of our subdivisions have ample space for both. Our county is rich in farm families. What incentives could you provide to get our farm families engaged, encouraging them to expand their family gardens this spring to help feed the people if the supply chain is disrupted? The storm's upon us. Now is the time to act. Spring planting is weeks away. There are literally millions streaming across our southern border. Don't know this? Turn off the propaganda channels and search out the true investigative journalists. They were few, but now their numbers are swelling as more find the courage to speak the truth in spite of the attacks on their lives, their fortunes, and their sacred honor. We have all seen the footage of the Allied invasion of World War II. These thousands of men storming the beaches to fight for freedom. Picture that and picture that mass of humanity storming our southern border every month. Every month, and the bulk of the men are military age. I fear that we cannot avoid armed conflict here at home. My belief is that the efforts across the country to stop the cheating and expose the corruption in our elections are successful. Donald Trump will win the presidency with the largest majority ever in our history, and the globalist socialist corrupt administration will unleash BLM, burn, loot, murder, and Antifa to create mayhem. If the efforts to deny the will of the people succeed again, patriots will not go willingly to the reeducation camps recommended by Hillary Clinton recently on the mainstream media. The storm is upon us, but we're blessed here in Onslow that amongst our very well armed citizenry are many, many retired military that have sworn an oath to protect us from all enemies, both foreign and domestic. Our true constitution, bequeathed to us by our founders, provides for militia. You should be working with the sheriff on how to best utilize this resource if or when it becomes necessary. There's never been a time in my life that the contrast between right and wrong and good and evil has been more apparent. It's time to look to our founders and the documents they gave us for the true path out of this travesty. It's time to restore our constitutional republic and the foundation, the bedrock of the republic, is the county. It's past time to wake up and stand in the breach. 2025, January, this time next year, will look nothing like today. I'll close with a brief prayer, if you'll let me. Search out in us, O Christ, the seeds of disunity, willfulness, insecurity, and ignorance. Transform them into service, trust, and awareness that unity and a common cause may be born. Thank you. And I'm slipping out to go across the street to the school board. There's a couple of people I want to hear speak, or I'd be here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is John Davis.
Board, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Forgive my glasses being down on my eyes. I'm getting used to having these progressives and then I have to go to my readers. I'm still getting used to it. So I'm not giving you my principal look, I promise. So first off, I want to say thank you for all the tourism dollars that y'all have been so kind to direct towards Swansburg for our dockwalk repair, which hopefully should be starting next week. So wanted to give you a quick update on that. Of course, our festivals and stuff like that. Want to say thank you for our county manager. I've already had several interactions with him, and he's very quick to respond and very, I love the depth of the response. You don't feel like you're getting a superficial response. You're getting real meat and real information, real answers. Some of the answers you don't want to hear, but at least they're very honest, and you know where he's coming from, and they got some depth to them. And so I appreciate that, Mr. Smithman. And so definitely wanted to share with that. And I wanted to bring back on the table Chairman Bright, and I had brought this up several years ago, and I'd like to put it back out on the table. I would love to see the municipal and the county boards have some joint meetings. I know legally that can get kind of cumbersome and difficult, but I think it would be good to have our boards come together and discuss common interests and common goals and create that teamwork and partnership between the two boards. And one of the other things I wanted to say thank you for was the EMS coverage. That's certainly improved in Swansburg. With that said, though, that I need to transition. This is where I'm going to ask for your help. It's not where we need it to be yet. Certainly an improvement, but we still have at least a couple days a week that I call the ambulance a bus, that we have an empty bus, or it's we don't have one at all. It's stationed somewhere else. So I would ask that we, as y'all go into the budget season, that you please look at how we can continue to improve that. I still get phone calls of where our response times are much slower than I would like them to be, and that our residents in the Swansburg Hubbard area, and I've even heard out in the Holly Ridge area that they have similar stories as to ours. So I would ask for your help with that. Also, would like, as you go into the season, as you know, Swansburg is doing a Veterans Gardens, and we got some very generous money from the state, and I would like to ask you guys to consider that as you get into your tourism grants to support the Veterans Garden that is being done in Swansburg. One of the things and credit has to go where credit is due, Chairman Foster told me I could steal his idea, but the idea I stole from him was doing a Veterans Trail, and I have been selling that Veterans Trail everywhere where I can, and I get a lot of positive response about how we can have a Veterans Trail all the way from Moorhead to Wilmington with the Marine Museum being the hub. And so with that said, I'm going to ask that we also consider in our tourism dollars how we can sponsor the Marine Museum. And I think the general is doing a great job of pushing that along and perhaps breaking ground even this year. The opioid fund, thank you guys for the meeting that we had right before Christmas, I believe, or right after Christmas. So much going on, it all runs together, but I think that was a very informative and helpful meeting. So thank you to your staff for that. And my big request out of that was to please work with private entities. Government can't do but so many things and do it well, where there's folks out there in the mental health world, in the addiction world that are good at what they do. So instead of building bigger government, let's work with partnerships with these private entities and help them be successful. Now, you're going to say, John, you've asked for all this money, and you're going to get ready to say this next thing, which is, hey, I am going to ask you to really scrutinize your budget because you guys hurt my pocketbook this year. We had to write a pretty sizable check to Onslow County for our different properties and stuff. And I'm going to, you know, the fact is that, yes, you guys cut the net or the tax rate, but our net taxes went up significantly. I think some, depending on who you talk to, average of 27% for most people that the tax rate went up. And so, at least in my area, because of the cost of homes and the appraisals and the assessments. So I would ask that. And then I would also ask that you guys work with our Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development. They are really performing well. They have turned a corner. They are doing a lot of good things. So I feel like we should really partner with them. So finally, in my five seconds left, just thank you. I know, you know, sitting on my board at Swansburg, I know what you do is difficult and you take a lot of criticism. So thank you for what you do.
Mr. Chairman, the final speaker is Deborah Kirkpatrick.
Good evening and thank you. I am not in politics or community or anything like that. So I'm just a quick little representative for our small neighborhood in Sneed's Ferry. It looks like there could be some big changes coming to it, and we just want to get some answers and be informed as to what we can expect. How many, how many homes do they plan on adding? What's it going to do to the traffic? It's, you know, I assume these days for every home that they add, you should expect two cars. Right now, the main road, we all walk our dogs every day. Our children play. We walk our children. The children meet the school bus out there. And so it is going to make a big change in how we do our daily lives. We'd like to know what the income levels to expect of these buildings that are being built down there and how many, you know, we want our, if we're going to be having all this come into our neighborhood, we want to make sure that our housing costs are not going to go down, that we're still going to have the same values in our home that we have now. We want to know what it's going to do to, like the drainage, what kind of costs are we going to have to incur in this neighborhood to help with the new drainage and things like that. We just want to make sure that a lot of those questions get answered tonight while we're here, if we can, and that everybody knows how much that we really love our neighborhood and our neighbors. So thank you for your time.
That was the last speaker, Mr. Smith. All right. So we'll go ahead and move into some of the public hearings this morning, and we'll turn that over to Mr. Smitherman to conduct these.
Yes, sir. The first item is the Hall Point rezoning. And prior to opening the public hearing, we will ask Planning Director Carter Metcalf to come up and brief the board and the public.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and County Commissioners. My name's Carter Metcalf, and I'm the Planning Director here at Onslow County. First item we have is the Hall Point rezoning request, as Mr. Smitherman stated, is P.R. EZ 2023, number 24. The applicant is Mr. John L. Pearson Associates, and the owners are 2D and ME Family Limited Partnership. We give an overview of the requests. The requested change is for Residential 8, manufactured or R-8M, to Residential 5 or R-5. Tax map number is 777-26, and it's located off Hall Point Road in the Sneed's Ferry Township. The rezoning area is 51.31 acres, and the property is currently vacant and forested. Now, an overview of the services, there is a four inch on Wasa Waterline along Hall Point Road, and the property would need to be served by individual septic systems as there's no sewer nearby. The fire service is with the Turkey Creek Fire District, and they have an ISO rating of four. Most recent traffic count closest to the property we have is from 2019. So it's a few years old, and it's off of Folters Landing Road. The traffic count was 1,100 trips at the time. Staff estimates the roadway's capacity close to 10,000, but again, the traffic count was several years old. The schools that would be serving the property are Dixon Elementary School, Dixon Middle School, and Dixon High School. Take a look at the zoning district. There you see the property is R-8M as well as all the adjacent properties. I'll take a look now at that zoning district. It's a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet or .81 acres, and the purpose of this zoning district is to accommodate moderate to high-density single-family and multifamily development, with a special emphasis there on manufactured housing. That's where the M comes from. And specifically, it's to be in our urbanizing areas of the county where they have access to utility and transport infrastructure to support it. Now, comparison with R-5 or Residential 5, minimum lot size is 5,000 square foot or .11 acres. And the purpose of this district, well, that's a typo there, is still the purpose statement of Residential 5, is to accommodate moderate to high-density single-family and multifamily residential development in urbanizing areas of the county. Now, we'll take a look at the comprehensive plan. So we're to go through the three different categories that are on the property, and then we'll take a look at the map. So the first category is the Community Growth Activity Center. This is to be pedestrian-oriented, transit-supportive, and act as a focal point for activity. It should have a mix of retail and service uses, but again, a special emphasis on residential ones. Appropriate uses are medium-to-high-density residential or ground-floor commercial with upper-story residential. And those commercial uses there should be limited in scale to those that would support the nearby community. Now, high-density residential is the second category. It's to provide for high-density single-family and multifamily development. Appropriate uses would be single-family and multifamily developments at a higher density scale. The last category is conservation. This is to accommodate our environmentally sensitive areas, those of environmental concern, specifically those within the floodplain. And appropriate uses, there are parks, playgrounds, and, you know, dedicated open space. Now, we'll take a look here at the comprehensive plan map. So you can see in the light blue is conservation, mainly follows the floodplain. We'll take a look at the environmental conditions, specifically the regulated floodplain later. The green is there, the high-density residential, and that purple color is that Community Growth Activity Center. Now, we'll take a look at the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan. It details two categories for the property. The first is conservation. Similar to the comprehensive plan of the county, the conservation areas are based on the regulated floodplain and may include locations where there were conservation easements at the time the plan was done. Its intent is to protect places of environmental, cultural, historical value. The other category is waterfront living. Waterfront living category is to maintain and promote water-focused uses, whether they're residential or non-residential. And as well, it should be limited scale for commercial uses, specifically those that promote tourism around water-based activities. And as well, infill residential, that would be at a complementary scale to what was existing. Again, this is the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan categories. We'll take a look at the floodplain and the regulated flood zones on the property. The property has all of the regulated flood zones. You see there in the green or teal color, it's the VE, which is the most restrictive zone, and then it moves all the way to the yellow where the yellow is non-restricted or the shaded X. Any development that would take place in the property would have to abide by the regulations in our floodplain damage prevention ordinance if it was within the floodplain. Now, we'll take a look at the reasonableness in the public interest. The proposed rezoning may be considered reasonable due to R-5 being a corresponding zoning district to Community Growth Activity Center and high-density residential categories, supported by a number of policies in the comprehensive plan, those being Onslow County supports a variety of housing and type and in scale and price point, as well as having a pro-growth mindset. While could be considered unreasonable because Residential 5 does not align with the conservation land use category, and there's several policies in Onslow County comprehensive plan that would not support the rezoning, the idea of having higher intensity development that's inside of lower intensity development, as well as protecting our environmental ecosystems and marine, you know, or high level of marine ecosystem such as that can be found in Chadwick Bay. Now, we'll take a look at Planning Board. They met on October 5th of 2023 and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant spoke on behalf of the request, and I believe is here tonight. Eleven citizens spoke against the rezoning request. Their concerns were increase in traffic and congestion on the roadway, degradation of wildlife habitat, impacting wetlands, roadway and school infrastructure not having the capacity to support development, and their concern was it didn't align with Onslow County's adopted plans. There was a petition submitted to staff of 88 signatories. Staff did not validate who signed that as on simply the honor system by who submitted it. And we'll take a look at the vicinity of the property. There has frontage on Riverside as well as Lawndale, which is a nearby adjacent neighborhood. And you might build another property. Hall Point intersects with Folter Landing. There, you know, to get to the property, you'd pass by River View Restaurant. Take a little bit of a closer look. You can see the property there. It's forested and vacant with existing residential around it. You can see, again, its proximity there to the bay. Now, we'll take a look at the property. Here is the portion, the first portion, portion you would pass along river, excuse me, right after passing River View, it would be there on your right on Hall Point. And then this is the opposite view from that same location. Now, before the board tonight, as respectfully requested by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P.R. EZ 2023, number 24, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now open the public hearing. We have nine speakers. The first speaker is John Pierce.
Good afternoon, fellow commissioners, and this is John Pierce of 405 Johnson Boulevard. I represent this rezoning and our plans to develop the property. The positive things is that we can, we will be building all the roads to DFT standards, and we can have an interconnection. If you've seen one of the first pictures down below the Sneed's, the River View there, that's an area that floods. And with the construction of our project, we plan on, we've got access to go all the way back to P. Re. Road, which would give multiple access. And to be honest with you, there's a lot of folks down in that area, but if it comes a flooded area, we don't have multiple access. Also, if you remember, it's serviced by a four-inch line. Our plan is to extend a six-inch main so we can have fire protection in there on the properties we're developing it. And the reason we're asking for R-5, it gives some affordability. First, to build a project similar like Escoba Bay or Peggy's Cove that's out off of 172. And I was blessed to have a unit in Escoba Bay. It ended up being a very nice project. We do not plan developing, and we're not building any units in the wetlands. I've had them delineated. I'm aware of the floodzone areas, and we can be working around those areas, and we're not going to be developing no wetlands at all. And we've got to get all the environmental permits, as well as the permits from the county and all the other agencies, and we will have to construct some stormwater. We had to get a stormwater permit, a permit to extend the water lines and permit to the county. And I think the big positive is that we want to construct this project, like I said earlier, because Escoba Bay, we're not planning on having any mobile homes in it. There will be some patio homes and some possibility of some townhomes in it. And I think it'll be a very positive for the Onslow County tax base, and I think what we're proposing is going to be in the highest and best use for the property. And we will have to have some buffers alone existing, where the border existing residents, and we plan to do that. And I'll be here if there's any questions the commissioners might have of me at any point in time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Robert Horchak.
Thank you. I'm Bobby Horchak, 275 Riverside Drive in Sneed's Ferry. I've sent each of you an email, which I hope you have had a chance to read. It seems like from your own people you have heard that this plan goes against the protection of the environment, the community, and all of the other items that are in your own plan. At the planning meeting, when they brought up each of the separate rezoning requests from different people, any one of them was not overwhelming, but when you put all of them together, including this one, it exceeded the school by double or so, which means you will need to start planning for schools to be built and, as well as the traffic concerns and all of the others that were mentioned in the petition. Further, this particular rezoning, while it's limited apparently in the areas in which can be built, that is a higher area. And as you saw by the pictures, the water runoff will will obviously go right into the marsh area. And as a fairly recent resident of only 12 years, where they've had other developments clear-cut, despite the prevention, all you see is mud flowing down into the water. So I would ask that it's already zoned for development, but at a much lesser scale than it is proposed, and that it be at least limited to that amount. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Carmen Lombardo.
Commissioners, thank you very much. Carmen Lombardo, I live at 238 Riverside Drive, have for approximately 30 years. I did make comments for the record, as noted by Planning Director. The area in Sneed's Ferry, as you heard, it has changed dramatically. Lot of, lot of people are coming. Development is coming. I ask that, you know, as you move forward in this decision and other decisions, that we consider capacity in terms of what the area community can support, what the infrastructure can support. As noted, there's no infrastructure development. Granted, Mr. Pierce said there is going to be some upgrades to support the project. We're all on Septic, and we live in a very small community, and the connection to Riverside Drive and Hall Point, we have no outlet to that road. It's a dead end. And what we're, what you have in front of you is a decision to connect a no-outlet road, dead-end street, to what would be a high residential development. That's a significant change to our quality of life in our small community. Love Sneed's Ferry, love Anza County, just sincerely hope that from a decision standpoint, we manage our growth and do it correctly. My ask is that the zoning stay as it is. It has development potential, just in its current condition. Without that higher density, would be a severe dramatic change for all of the residents on Hall Point, Riverside Drive, Moore Landing, and Hall Lane. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Don Dool?
It's close enough. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, staff, and Anza County citizens and guests. I'm just up here to confirm receipt of the email that I provided everybody, and wanted to highlight a few things in there for not only you, but the folks here. I think one of the most important things is, you know, the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan, and that was adopted in 2014, 15 by the Commissioners, the county government, and is not being implemented today. None of it really is. There's, if you haven't read it, you need to read it. There are stages in there that should have been implemented 10 years ago. But some of the main thing is the vision of Sneed's Ferry, and part of it, just highlight a few things on it, is preserving its history, enhancing community identity, natural resources, and unique features through responsible growth strategies, which we don't do as a county. In addition, with this strategy, you know, the integration of land use and our transportation will support existing and future growth without compromising cultural and environmental resources. And that area is an environmental resource. From that plan, it is considered to be conservation. Also, you know, providing the land use map and the place types, which is categorized as zonings for that area, which Mr. Metcalf already indicating is waterfront living and conservation, and those zonings should have been created 10 years ago to reflect that, and they were not. And as I indicated already, the plan was accepted and adopted by the county, the Commissioners at the time, and the government. You know, I think instead of ramping up and approving high-density zonings throughout the county, or specifically Sneed's Ferry, which does not support the current or the future infrastructure that's on the plan for utilities, roads, especially schools and our kids' safety, right? We, as the people, the government, should be encouraging agricultural, rural agriculture and farming, and providing incentives to keep that, to preserve and protect our areas of farming. In my last note, I'd like to just caveat and strengthen something that Mr. Kepf I've already read, is the waterfront living. I don't think he really enhanced it on what it is, you know, and from the plan, this waterfront living is, should be low-density, and that's anything around the coastal area. And said 51 acres is identified as conservation, right, which is limited use opportunities, primary targeting recreation, education, tourism, and related issues. That's what we should be focusing on. But I thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Abby Haney.
My footbumps are loud. I'm Abby Haney. I live at 208 Smallberry Court in Justice Farms. If you notice on the map where the backside of that neighborhood ends on Lawndale, which is right before my street. Long-term Anza County resident, I lived in North Topsla Beach for years, but we just recently purchased in Justice Farms. And part of the draw to the house that we purchased is with our two little ones, we are in a, on a cul-de-sac that is at the end of the neighborhood. And a big concern with this new development going in is the increase of traffic. Our kids ride bikes, rollerblades, scooters. They're always running up and down the roads, and this could definitely impact that. And also, again, it's been touched upon, but with the school systems, my daughter was at Dixon for her kindergarten year, and then Coastal Elementary opened because we needed a second school. That one's already almost at capacity, as well as Dixon Elementary. There's a lot of other developments going in that would probably go to the coastal schools, depending on how they rezone, but it's just, it's all this high-density development, I don't know where these kids are going to have room. And we've got a school that's in its third year that's already almost full. And then the third thing that I had was just, as far as with the notification of the rezoning, I think there were signs on the Hall Point sign, but we never saw anything in Justice Farms. If they were, if they were posted, I definitely didn't see them on the main drag, so I think there's some other people here that has some to further this discussion, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Siobhan Evans.
My name is obviously Siobhan Evans. I live at 501 Hay Baylor Court in Justice Farms. You know, I'm not really great at any of this stuff. Honestly, I have a lot of issues with public speaking, but the situation and how it's going to impact our little quiet neighborhood is pretty frustrating, and it's going to give me enough, hopefully, motivation and strength today to come up here and not fumble too much, so bear with me. First thing I want to get out of the way is I do have two questions to ask. The first one being, does the developer's proposal fall under the category of small-lot suburban neighborhoods? The second one is, are the residents of Justice Farms exempt from this rezoning notification? You know, recently, we weren't even made aware of all this change happening. Like I said, our neighborhood is Justice Farms. It's that little piece that they, on Lawndale Lane, you'll see on the map, that's the end of our neighborhood. I've lived in that neighborhood, in the community, since 2008 with my husband. And one of the biggest draws to our community for many of the people in our neighborhood is the fact that it is a quiet, small neighborhood that is close-knit. There is safety there. People are able to walk their dogs. People are able to go for walks, the elderly, small children with their families. We have some concerns with the increase, obviously, with safety in regards to more traffic going through, as we've seen in previous meeting notes, the discussion of Lawndale Lane being used for this development. However, none of our area, none of our neighborhood or community was ever made aware of this. It almost feels like, as part of the community, we've been made invisible, or as if our neighborhood doesn't matter in this, which is sad and frustrating. We did submit a petition that we went door-to-door for. Hopefully, you guys have had a chance to see it. I did bring it tonight, with at least 105 people in our neighborhood, literally, probably 98% of our neighborhood signing. The only people that did not sign were in the few houses where someone wasn't home. Nobody was aware of the situation. Everyone is obviously feeling very disappointed and let down, and kind of almost like we've been failed. That's a concern, just because I always have a lot of faith in my community and the people we elect. And I would like to hope that our best interest is always important, even the smallest person, the smallest neighborhood. You know, change marches on, progress happens, but there is mindful change, and there is greedy change. There is nothing we can see, after looking through what we can find about this stuff that we, like I said, we've just been made aware of it very recently, unfortunately, by our own stumbling upon it, if you will. And there's nothing we can see that beneficially helps or is positive for our little neighborhood that has existed, I believe, for like 20 years now. You know, my husband fell in love, fell in love with this area. You know, he was a Marine. He passed away recently. And we don't have a lot of family. And the one thing that made him feel really good was he would say that he knew I was in a good community, and our neighborhood was a small, close-knit community, and that I would be safe there, and that our government, our officials, always have our best interest. But unfortunately, in especially recent years, and especially with this coming to light, I feel very much betrayed and let down and failed. I was a teacher in this community for many years. I love kids. I love being able to know that everyone in our community, in our little neighborhood of Justice Farms, is able to safely enjoy it, being able to know their kids can go outside and play, and they're not worried about increased traffic or an accident. We're not worried about the fact that we're losing a beautiful area of wildlife forestry, and even though, yes, it might be potentially buildable and accessible, it still should be conserved. We lose more and more areas of land that we probably should be protecting. So I'm just, like I said, I'd like to know why our little neighborhood was forgotten, why it's being, almost feels like we're being brushed over and kind of pushed through this. We do exist. We are separate from Hall Point Road. We are Justice Farms. We have been a part of this committee for a very long time, and I hope you guys will be mindful of the future generations that are going to live with whatever decisions we make now. So I do appreciate you guys' time, and thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, as much as we appreciate your enthusiasm and the great job that she did, we have to maintain our rules of procedure without applause from, from the crowd and everything. So I appreciate you being here. I just want to reiterate that to you, and I will say that thank you, and we are sorry for the loss of your, your husband, and we appreciate his service to this country.
Mr. Smithman? The next speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Gabriel Fernandez.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Gabriel, and I'm a resident of Justice Farms. I'm here today to express my deep concerns regarding the proposed rezoning that seeks to utilize and modify Lawndale Lane as the primary entrance for rezoning and increased density. First, I am here representing over 230 residents that are backing this petition for the rejection of the proposed label PREZ 2023 to 2024, a project that in its current form threatens the core values and safety of our community. Second, I am here to demand additional hearings to thoroughly consider and mandate critical improvements should there be any future contemplation of this project moving forward. These improvements include the installation of a sidewalk on Lawndale Lane. It is essential, it is an essential measure to safeguard our community's welfare that aligns with the principles of the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan. This demand is not only about compliance, it's about safeguarding our children and preserving the character of our community. With that being said, I would like to highlight the unique character of our community. Justice Farms is not just a collection of houses. It is a vibrant neighborhood with a strong sense of place and belonging. Our families, children, and elderly walk, bike, and enjoy Lawndale Lane daily. This proposal threatens to disrupt the sense of place of our neighborhood, transforming its character and impacting the quality of life for all residents and our guests. Safety has also been a concern. Lawndale Lane is not just an access point. Many children use Lawndale Lane each morning to reach and wait at their bus stops. There are times of low visibility, often in early hours, and the absence of adequate sidewalks and lighting place our children in harm's way, especially with the proposed increase in traffic that rezoning would bring. Also, I would like to address an issue of due process. To my knowledge, and that of my fellow residents, we have not received any official notification regarding this proposed rezoning. Our residents were not notified of the October 5th, 2023 hearing. The lack of notification has denied us the opportunity to organize, to discuss, and properly petition on this matter. This oversight in due process is concerning and undermines the trust and the cooperation between the residents, the developers, and the county authorities. Rezoning and development that disregard community safety, character, and due process is unacceptable. We urge the board to seriously consider these concerns, to reject the current rezoning proposal, and to mandate the installation of a sidewalk and proper lighting on Lawndale as a non-negotiable condition for any future development. Furthermore, we demand another hearing on this matter, ensuring that proper notification and due process are strictly adhered to restore trust and dialogue between the residents, the developers, and the county authorities if you continue to move forward. Thank you for your attention and your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Tracy Lewis.
My name's Tracy Lewis. I've lived in Sneed's Ferry for 20, almost 20 years. When I got pregnant and we were going to start a family, we decided to move to the old ferry, which is the part that we're all discussing, because it's more isolated, away from all the chaos that's everywhere else in Sneed's Ferry. I know that, like, you've heard about the flooding, the property values, we have to worry about the harm to wildlife, as I may add mentioned. I hear there's a woodpecker that we're worried about. School capacity is a huge issue. It has been an issue since my kids started school. We got a new school, still an issue, and the transportation along with that. That traffic counter thing definitely needs to be updated. That's nowhere close. You could ask anybody in the morning, we don't have enough bus drivers. Anybody who has to go to work hates all the parents that are sitting in the car line because we're holding up all the traffic, because there's nowhere to go in Sneed's Ferry. There's a lot of houses. Nobody works in Sneed's Ferry. Everybody travels to Bass or Wilmington. We have very few, our small business owners are the ones that hold down the fort while everybody goes to work and take care of them when they come back. So all these issues are monumental on their own, so I'm kind of surprised that's made it this far. But I did read the meeting notes from the last one, and there was one positive that John Pierce mentioned, so I wanted to talk about that, and he said it would increase interconnectivity of the roads and make the area safer. And that's not actually a positive. Our roads, we had DOT come out because we actually had a woman who got injured because of hitting a bump and flying off her scooter. When they came out, they repaired the roads, but they also stated that they didn't think it was going to be a permanent solution. They believed that there's something wrong under the asphalt, you know. Whenever, maybe, if they come out to actually reassess, we'll get an update on that, but based on how it looks now, I'm going to go ahead and guess that we have, it's more than skin deep on the roads. more than skin deep on the roads. So you're increasing traffic, not to mention building a housing development. We're going to have heavy equipment coming through on the roads, construction materials. It's just going to rapidly deteriorate the condition, and we have scarce maintenance as it is. So that's unsafe. And then, as everybody has mentioned, we are a very strange community. You're not going to believe it. We're very close knit. We have respect for each other. We actually have neighborly love for each other. I have two kids. I live on Longdale, the main road. It's the scariest road because that's where all the traffic comes through. My kids are on scooters, bikes. We have people who ride around in golf carts. I know whose dog belongs to who, whose kids belong to who. I know if my kids are out there, if they fall down, scrape their knee somewhere, somebody knows where my kid goes and they can get ahold of me. It is so safe. They are so free and they are out of my hair, and it's wonderful. And if we have that traffic coming through, it loses, we lose the trust in the community. I don't know who's coming through anymore. All, we have a neighborhood watch. We're all always watching out for each other, even if it's subconscious. But I know if I see a car come in I've never seen before, I'm like, where's that car going? So you watch them come back out and we just know. So if somebody said, hey, I had this stolen at 3:00, I'd be like, oh, I saw the car. That's just how we are. So that would be destroyed. We have potential for an increase of theft because people can ride through and they're going to have a whole nother way out of the neighborhood. Same thing with our kids. I would hate to ever think of what could happen. But I have a kid with autism. He's prone to wander at times. Now he have an exit point. So now I have to restrict him, restrict his freedom of where he can go. It's just, it's not going to make it safer connecting the two areas. It's going to destroy our community, destroy the freedom we have, the wonderful little vibe, the seclusion that we all like. I don't see any pros at all from anything that has been mentioned. But, so I hope that you just really consider the information, think about the fact that it is the old ferry. You're talking about conservation, history. That's where the fishermen, we have the shrimp boats. It's a beautiful place and a fancy housing addition isn't any, obviously, anything that any of us want down there. There's, that's the only bill, land left, I'm pretty sure, in the whole area. So I appreciate all of you listening to me. I made it. Y'all have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our final speaker is Lynn Mandl.
Hey, my name is Lynn Shepherd Mandl. I don't know that there's anyone in here that can say they have as much background. My great-grandfather operated the ferry when it existed. Some of the things that aren't mentioned is, I understand that we are not incorporated, so we don't have a zoning board that helps protect us personally, and we rely on the county and the zoning county board. If, I lived, I live at one, my husband and I live at 152 Hall Point Road. If you look at the pictures that he just showed, the boats, that is my front yard. The, I'm viewing that from my house. The place that they're talking about developing is marsh. I particularly see from the condos out on Peru and just a runoff from Justice Farm is just a natural thing. I see personally the effect that it's having. What no one has mentioned is there are eight campgrounds within one mile of this. The infrastructure is not holding up in Sneets Ferry or Onslow County, you know, anywhere really. The high school, Dixon High School, is the largest high school now, population, Onslow County, that is Swansboro, I'm pretty sure. The wildlife has disappeared. The tree line has disappeared from pollution. We had six or eight deer we would feed every day. We might see them once every two months, one or two of them. We have a permanent high water line, high water sign by our mailbox. It can't handle anymore. If you go, I beg all of you just to visit the area. Go down Peru Road. The roads are hideous. Like she said, I completely understand somebody getting injured. It's killing our alignment and our car. Also, I served as the co-chair or the vice chair on the Sneets Ferry Community Council, so I met some of you at some of the community things we've had. Nobody's mentioned that our terrible overdose rate. By putting more people in there, you're just adding more problems. I can't tell you the number of near golf cart accidents I've had from toddlers and drunks in that area on golf carts because it's just so infiltrated. We actually have to just kind of look outside to see if the tide's high enough that we can get across our driveway to go to church or go to work. I just beg of you, come view what we have. I don't know what kind of improvement they can do. I mean, when you develop in a marsh, in a wetland, we're already losing this. I thought that the coastal conservation had put zone and protections in to protect things like this from happening. I'm sorry, I don't have a thing prepared. I'm just speaking from my heart. I just, I've lived there 57 years. My father was actually delivered in the house, his home house there. So I'm five generations of Sneets Ferry. And something you have to remember is a lot of the people that live in Sneets Ferry from the older days have already been relocated from Camp La Jun. So they were moved out of that. Now we're, then they go and they develop an area that they raise their kids, and now they're being pushed out of that. I just beg all of you just to go down and just look, just look at the roads, look at the area that he showed. I don't know how you can build houses there. You can't walk through it, so I don't know how it can be developed. But I just beg of all of you, just please, just visit it. Don't see it as a dollar amount coming back into the community. See it as a disaster of what it's going to do to the community. Thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. Chairman, we can now close the public hearing and the commissioners can deliberate on the decision.
Before we close it, Mr. Smitherman, with it being the, make sure I'm doing this at the right time, Mr. DeSelm's. We did receive Mr. Fernandez, his letter. I think Mr. Fernandez is still there. And this is what he shared with us. We did receive that. And then we did receive a second petition from the residents that I think maybe Justice Farms, I think maybe Abbey, maybe you spoke of that. We have received that. We have that with the signatures that I think Mr. Metcalf mentioned, the other one, not verified, but the integrity of everybody going in and doing this. We do have this in hand that is with the Justice Farm neighborhood as well. So with that being said, I'll go back to you, Mr. Smitherman.
I'd like to make a motion to disapprove the rezoning for Hall Point Road, please.
I would second that motion.
We have a second.
Just for, so I'm clear, is a motion to deny, correct?
I'm making a motion to disapprove the rezoning request for Hall Point Road.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for the denial of the rezoning of the Hall Point rezoning, 2023 00024. Do we have any discussion?
I'd like to have Mr. Metcalf explain what the advertisement requirements are for rezoning like this.
So the advertising requirement is two-stepped. So for the first, for planning board, a sign is put on the property or in the adjacent right-of-way, which is similar to the sign that you saw posted. And then as well, we also send out a letter. And so that's for planning board. And so we go above and beyond the statutory requirement for planning board. And then for the Board of Commissioners, we post the sign, we send out letters, and we post in the Jacksonville Daily News. And if Kevin could help me out and put a picture up on screen for me. That is a picture of the end of Longdale, so we put a second sign out to ensure that the folks at Longdale Drive knew as well. So we try to go above and beyond the statute of requirements as we have to do one sign. We did two, one on either side of the development, as well as notifying everyone within 300 feet of a property line. So staff did their best, but again, if the sign was destroyed in the storm or was removed for some reason, there's nothing the staff could do about that. But we try to do our best to make sure that both ends were properly informed and again, going above and beyond.
I have a question as well. On page 16 in the materials we received is talking about the comprehensive plan. There's several policies that support the rezoning. There were four there. Then there's several policies in the comprehensive plan that do not support the rezoning. There were seven there. The purpose of that comprehensive plan is, I always thought it was a guide for us as we looked at these issues to determine whether or not it was appropriate to rezone. And yet, there are seven bullets against it and there's only four bullets for it. So is, can you explain, is that unusual or did the planning board have any aha moments here where they began to say, hey, maybe, maybe we shouldn't do this? Or was it just unanimous or what was the outcome there?
So the Onslow County Comprehensive Plan and the Sneets Ferry Plan are plans of recommendation to the governing board. They are guidance. So in that document has statistics, demographics, projections, but also good planning principles. And that's what those bullets are, are planning principles that Onslow County is to be guided by. So some of them talk about increasing housing of variety type, and then some of them talk about protecting our marine ecosystems. And they go through all the different aspects of the community. So staff goes through the comprehensive plan and pulls out all of the ones that we see that are related to the plan and may be helpful in informing the decision. Now with the planning board, they voted unanimously to recommend approval. I don't know if they had a specific aha moment because I can't know their thoughts all the time, but what was spoken highlighted the importance of providing roadway connectivity as well as promoting, you know, increased fire protection in the area. And that's what was detailed in the minutes. That was what was verbally spoken. But as well, you know, the minutes were included in your packets.
Okay, another question. On a lot that's small, .11 acres, how can you have a septic system on a plot that's small? Because whenever I built a house, my drain field was about as big as a plot for the actual home. Yeah, so how can you have a septic system on .11 acres? Is that going to be big enough to have the drain field and the area for repair or whatever if something went wrong and you needed to put in a different tank or whatever? Is that big enough?
I would say I'm not a soil scientist, so I'm not probably the most accurate expert for that. I would defer to the, you know, environmental health of that. But my experience in planning with, you know, being over the, you know, planning building, we see lots that are that small that can't accommodate a septic system. It depends on the system. It depends on the suitability of the soils. But again, I would defer to a soil scientist or, you know, the environmental health to talk about that. But we do see lots that aren't in that size that do support a system of that sort. And as well, the other option the subdivision ordinance would give them would be an off-site system. So maybe there's several lots where they would have an off-site and it would be pumped there, and they would have a community system that could serve multiple lots. So there's a variety of options that would be available to them in terms of permitting wastewater, but just no sewer line at this time unless the developer brought it in.
Was that discussed of having an off-site area to pump? Or did they think that all of these lots are going to perk that are developable?
I would defer to the developer on that. I don't know if he's done any sort of soil analysis of the property yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smitherman, do you got any comments? Because you and I have discussed this, and I'm a reserve once I hear you talk exactly the way I feel about this project. So if you would kindly explain to...
I believe that it's out of order because this is up to us now to make a decision, not the manager. It's up to the board members.
Okay. All right, then let's go ahead and...
And I might be wrong, but I think the attorney can help me out here. This was passed on to the board. The board needs to discuss it.
Can I rephrase what, I mean, what I will say is this, when this rezoning came up and the first communication came to us via email, I had some concerns which reflected the growth and said subsequent development of Sneets Ferry. And so Chairman Foster, I was hoping that maybe we, I had a long conversation also with our manager just about ways that we can be approaching in a proactive way future developments in our county because we are behind the eight ball with the comprehensive plan and we have not utilized the Sneets Ferry Community Plan either. So I'm just wondering if we might be able to just get his opinion on, or word it in such a way, which I think was very reflective and accurate, that will give a light to what I think a lot of us are thinking here.
Is that something?
Could we get any input?
Commissioner Buchanan is saying...
That's all I'm saying. Can we get input from him? Not a decision, but just some input?
Right. I think Commissioner Buchanan's correct. Ultimately, the decisions with this board.
Oh, of course.
I do think Mr. Smitherman can give options. I typically don't ask staff to give an opinion as to whether they're in favor or disinfavor of something like this because that's this board's decision. And that's also why you get the different bullet points, right? So you get the pros on what it could meet and what it couldn't. So we try to be fair to both sides when it comes to that, but if Mr. Smitherman feels comfortable in giving you options...
Let me ask you a question, though. Okay, I understand where she's coming from. I totally get it. We can listen to recommendations, but there is a motion on the floor. And so what I'm understanding is, you know, the motion is to disapprove the rezoning that's presented to us tonight. So is, are we trying to add to that to get some more clarification before we vote? Is that what I'm hearing? I'm asking honestly because I'm trying to, I mean, more clarification and more...
Honestly, what I was looking for was just, he had a very succinct way to reflect something that I was personally thinking. That's all. And I think it would probably echo what you think and what Mr. Buchanan thinks and also what the chairman thinks as well.
Okay. I'm just asking, because I'm just trying to understand, and I get what you're saying.
For, just for the citizens to understand...
Right, right. I think the biggest concern that I have is the Sneets Ferry Plan. 2014, if I get that year right, I think somebody mentioned it a while ago, they came to us, Sneets Ferry citizens coming to us wanting our help to help them so this didn't happen in Sneets Ferry. So now it's happened. So now we're making a decision to move forward on it, and that's my concern. Why are we not paying attention to the Sneets Ferry Plan? Because we had seven bullets, I think Mr. Price made it up, said there were seven bullets against and only four bullets in favor. Something's not right there.
Let's do this. We have the motion and the second, and we can go ahead and finish the discussion on that. In between, is that an appropriate time for Mr. Smitherman to share some of the comprehensive plan stuff before we move into the next hearing? Is that appropriate? Does everybody, because what he's going to share is not going to have any impact on this vote.
No.
So let's do that. You feel comfortable with that, Mr. DeSelm's? I think that's, that's good. So do we have any other discussion? You hear? You know, it's really amazing that whenever I say something, then somebody objects to it, and I'm trying to bring it out. Now, Mr. Buchanan just sat down there. Now, don't hit that... Mr. Commissioner Scott, all due respect, let's try and maintain here without each other, and we can lift our discussion... But you let them talk, but you won't let me talk.
Okay, first, okay, let me just...
Just a second.
There was no, I heard what was said, and he wasn't challenging you. He was going by the rules of order.
But then he went back and talked again and stated in 2014...
Asking a question.
Gentlemen, we're going to stop right here. That's enough. These people have come out here to hear a decision made on what's been presented before us. Commissioner Carpenter was just wanting to let people hear about the comprehensive plan. Mr. Buchanan, we talked about the Sneets Ferry Plan. We've stopped that. We're going to hear from Mr. Smitherman in just a second. And what I would like to add before we go to the vote is, I very much, this board very much appreciates all the citizens that come in and spoke this evening. We very much appreciate how you come to the podium and you presented yourselves to the Board of Commissioners. And a forum of this nature, it's a very professional forum, and I appreciate how you handled when we had the clapping. I thought these citizens handled that very well as well. That was no disrespect meant from the chair seat to you. It was just, we appreciate you being here. We appreciate you coming in and speaking to us in the manner in which you spoke to us because that's how we're supposed to do things. And I think this board very much appreciates that we don't, we don't go into chaos, that each one of you come up and you present what you've researched... that each one of you come up and you present what you've researched, what your thoughts are, what your feelings are, and it's imperative that this board sits here and listens to you as you share those thoughts. It is very much appreciated, appreciated regardless of the decision that we make, I think it is, it's, it's, it is the bedrock of our local government and our society for you to be able to come up here and, and share that and do it in the manner in which you did. I think that is one of the most important things to, to understand and believe in what you're doing and know that you can come and do that and we don't drop into, to some form of, of chaos. So with that being said, we have a motion.
Chairman, I would like to make some comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Men.
Can I make some comments? I, I would just like it to be noted that, that, that there's a very limited amount of buildable area in this 51 acres. It's not like they're gonna clear 51 acres and build on it. There is, there is flood area that they won't be able to build on. And the fact is, under the current zoning, I mean, they could put a trailer park in there. And that, and that's, that's, under the current zoning, they could do that. And it seems to me like people would be much happier with some nice houses than they would a trailer park. So, anyway, that would be my comments.
Okay, no further discussion on that. We appreciate that and we won't reiterate everything there. So we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had vibrant discussion. And now that being said, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign?
No.
So the motion carries five to two in favor of denying the motion for the Hall Point rezoning. So thank you. And Mr. Smitherman, give you a couple of minutes if you, if that's okay. And after that, we've been requested to take a, a 10-minute recess.
Sure. And I certainly have no opinion regarding the, the board's decision. Two, two things that we have all in some way, shape or form had a conversation over the last few months about, and that's about the comprehensive planning process. That is about the, specifically the Sneed's Ferry Local Area Plan that is, does now have age on it, but that was never properly intertwined and adopted as part of the overriding comprehensive plan. Mr. Metcalf is leading the charge to correct that, and we think within the next six or eight, or eight weeks, we will be proposing a new comprehensive plan draft for your review for the community's input. And including in that plan is, are the elements of the Sneed's Ferry Small Area Plan as developed eight, 10 years ago. So did want to bring that to your attention and to the public's attention, that whatever ills of the past regarding that plan exist, they are being remedied as we speak. The second item I was, would offer for your consideration in future deliberations, and I do not know specifically this project or the offensive elements to anyone, but you do have a tool at your disposal called conditional zoning. And it's a tool that we don't use much in Onslow County, my anecdotal observation. But that, what that tool can do, when an applicant comes forward and asks for something like a higher density use, a table of permitted uses for the purpose of improving traffic and connectivity, when we approve it, if we would approve that this evening, it would have opened up the entire menu of permitted uses in that higher density zone and you would have no control after your decision to regulate what happens in that zoning district as long as it's in the table of permitted uses. Under a conditional zoning proposal, we can hold the applicant to the distinct proposal that they submit on paper. I.e., they're saying 55 lots, this size, this layout, and all of a sudden, that becomes the permitted use in that district and the only permitted use in that district. And any massive changes or even more than moderate changes to that plan would have to come back to you. So it gives you another level of discretionary control to exercise in the zoning process and can help you implement your comprehensive plan and the associated small area plans going forward. Those are my comments.
I got a, I got a question real quick. So, and I really appreciate Commissioner Carpenter because I, I understand where she's coming from, absolutely I do, but what you just said, all of that with a conditional zoning, that to me in a layman's mind, it's negotiating. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
It certainly can be discussed that way. It is a back and forth between the staff and the applicant. To try to produce a plan that adheres to your vision as expressed to us in the comprehensive plan, and it gives us different tools to get to a reasonable accommodation of the applicant and still protect the interests that otherwise are not being discussed of the associated community.
Negotiating, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. And folks, we appreciate your patience in hearing conditional zoning. You didn't come tonight to hear that, but it always is good to know that there are ways of doing things if you're ever in this situation again. With that being said, I'd go into recess for 10 minutes.
Please, thank you.
We'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting back into session at this time, and we will move on to the next rezoning and turn this over to Mr. Smitherman that will lead us through this public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is the Cora's Cove rezoning, and Mr. Metcalf will come present the case.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, and County Commissioners, we have the Cora's Cove rezoning request, P R E Z 2023, number 26. The applicant is Cora's Cove LLC, and there are several different owners of the property listed there on your screen. An overview of the request is a change from rural agriculture or RA to residential 10 or R10. Tax map number is 772-215.4. It's located off NC Highway 172 in the Stumps Sound Township. The rezoning area is 55.73 acres and the property is currently vacant and forested. An overview of the services, there's an eight-inch Onwassa water line along NC Highway 172 and an eight-inch Onwassa water main though along Sneed's Ferry Road. The wastewater for the property is formerly Pluris, you know, now Onwassa has purchased them. And so there is a sewer main of theirs along NC Highway 172. The fire service is Turkey Creek with an ISO rating of four. And the traffic count we have along NC Highway 172, then again, the most recent one comes from 2021. We had 20,500 trips. Staff estimates capacity around 27,000. School servicing the property is Dixon Elementary, Dixon Middle School, and Dixon High School. We'll take a look at the zoning map. Here you can see the property there is in rural agriculture. There's a variety of other zonings in the nearby area. The light blue across 172 is highway business. The purple's residential five, the orange residential 10, and then that darker blue there is residential 20. And again, there's other zoning in the area, RM8 and community business. So pretty much almost all the different zoning districts in one screen for you. The current zoning district is rural agriculture, minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet or .46 acres. Its purpose is to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county while accommodating limited low-density single-family and limited commercial uses that would serve the surrounding community. Comparison residential 10, it's minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet or .23 acres. The purpose of this district is to accommodate moderate-density single-family and limited multifamily residential developments in urbanizing areas of the county that have access to the necessary utility and transportation infrastructure that would support development at that scale. We'll take a look at the comprehensive plan. For this property, there are three different categories, and we'll look at each of the three. The first is the Community Growth Activity Center. So the Community Growth Activity Center is a district that is to be pedestrian-oriented, transit-supportive, and act as a focal point for activity. It should have a mix of reduced retail and service uses of those that have a specific emphasis on residential uses. Appropriate uses of that are medium-to-high-density residential, ground-floor commercial with upper-story residential, and services and commercial uses that would support that nearby community. Again, it's to be a focal point for that local area. Next is high-density residential. The purpose of that district is to provide for high-density single-family and multifamily developments. The next category there is medium-density residential, which is to provide for predominantly single-family residential areas and accommodate some planned multifamily developments with limited commercial nodes. And we'll see how this is displayed on the comprehensive plan. You can see there the Community Growth Activity Center, then going out from that is the high-density residential, and out from that the medium-density residential. The idea of the comprehensive plan here was that you would have a focal point of community centered around the four-corner's intersection that would be rating out along our major arterial roadways, and decreasing in density as you got outward. Now we'll take a look at the environmental conditions. There's no regulated flood zones on the property, or any regulated blue-line streams. However, there are some nearby. Now I'll take a look at the reasonableness and the public interest. The proposed rezoning may be considered reasonable due to other residential zoning in the area, and residential 10 would align with the Community Growth Activity Center and medium-density residential categories. The request is supported by a number of policies in the comprehensive plan, though speaking towards having housing that has a variety of scales, sizes, and affordability options, and having a pro-growth mindset. While the proposed rezoning may be considered unreasonable because it does not align with high-density residential land uses of the future land use map, there's a few policies that would not support that as well. And also, as a note, included in your staff packets is also analysis on the Sneed's Ferry community plan, which listed as business center. Now to note, at the planning board meeting on October 5th, the Onslow County Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning request. One applicant spoke, the applicant spoke on behalf of the request, and they are here tonight. And then one citizen spoke against petition. Their concerns were focused in on the school and roadway infrastructure not being able to handle this development. Now we'll take a look here at the area. You can see the property highlighted in the red. There across is the Hawthorne Apartments, Hawthorne at Stillwater. There's a number of developments existing and proposed that are different stages of construction in the nearby area. We'll take a closer look there at the property. You can see it is currently vacant and forested. As well, here's what the property looks like from NC Highway 172, and you can see there in the picture the required posting of the rezoning sign. So as respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider their proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z 2023, number 26. Adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman, we can now open the public hearing. We have one speaker, and that speaker is Justin Nifong.
May I please the board? I'm Justin Nifong. I'm actually from Winston-Salem, but I've spent more time in Sneed's Ferry than any other place. I understand that this rezoning request maybe isn't as popular as the first. So I'm here mostly to say the applicant is here to answer any questions. I've been in front of a lot of commissioners before. Feel like this property is appropriate for the requested rezoning. It's, you know, proximal arterial roads. There's no stub in the existing neighborhood. The issues that we saw in the prior rezoning request, I just don't necessarily think are present here. I did, you hear all kinds of things, and as we sat and waited on this commissioner meeting, I heard some, what I'll call locals, say, "This really needs to be developed, and it's an eyesore right now, and they're looking forward to it." So I heard all the opposition before in Sneed's Ferry. I understand that's the old Ferry part, but this seems appropriate for this location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Do we have any more speakers? Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir, we can close the public hearing.
Okay. All right. Public meeting has been closed.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve.
Second?
We have a second. Any discussion?
I just want to go on the record and say, kind of to follow up on what we talked about with the first rezoning. I personally, until I know for a fact that the comprehensive plan is adequately incorporating the community plan from Sneed's Ferry, and that all of the entities, including us, the planning board, the staff in the planning department, and those two documents are integrated fully, and we are, we have a vision and a decision on how to move forward with the growth that Sneed's Ferry is experiencing, that I do not feel comfortable approving anything in that area right now.
Could I ask Mr. Metcalf when that could be accomplished? Is that a possibility to, where they'll be all integrated together, what Commissioner Carpenter is asking for?
Staff is currently working on to preparing the draft for commissioner review. Staff wanted to make sure that it was as polished as possible, and not some sort of half-hearted attempt was put before the commissioners. So staff has been working through the winter with our consultant on updating it, and being very specifically poignant in making sure that the Sneed's Ferry plan has been incorporated. In fact, that's what has been part of the delay, is asking our consultant to go back through and add more in. And so we've been very particular in that, as well as taking the things that went well in the plan, and the good ideas there, and seeing if we can include them, not just in Sneed's Ferry, but county-wide. So we are working to that, but to answer your question, Commissioner, we hope in six to eight weeks, we'll have that to you. And then after that, we'll go through our public engagement and other key stakeholders to make sure that we have buy-in from those that will help us implement the plan before getting adopted by, obviously, the commission here.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So the nays, raise your hand, so that motion fails four to three. So I think we're moving into the final rezoning public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is the Howard rezoning, and Mr. Metcalf will brief the board on the request.
Our final request before the board tonight is the Howard rezoning, P R E Z 2023, number 28. The applicant is Tidewater Associates Incorporated, and the owners are Yula and Brandon Howard. And the applicant is here tonight. Well, overview of the request, the requested change is from rural agriculture and highway business to only highway business. The tax map number is 62-9. Location is at the intersection of Gum Branch Road and Roadstown Road, and is in the Richlands Township. The rezoning area is 45.43 acres, and the current use is agricultural. We'll take a look at the services for the property. There's a 14-inch Onwassa water line along Gum Branch Road, and an eight-inch Onwassa water line along Roadstown Road. The wastewater for the property could be the 10-inch Onwassa sewer force main along Gum Branch Road. Fire service is through the Half Moon Fire Department, the ISO rating of five. And the traffic for the area in Gum Branch, the most recent count we had, which is a considerable number of years past, is from 2016. Traffic count then was at 17,000. Staff estimates the capacity around 13,000. Roadstown Road, we had a little bit sooner, was at 2018, still a number of years old. At that point, it was 4,900. Staff estimates the capacity of just over 13,000. Schools serving the property would be Stateside Elementary, Northwoods Park Middle School, and Jacksonville High School. We'll take a look here at the property. You can see it highlighted in red. It's location there, along Roadstown Road and Gum Branch Road. See, the green is rural agriculture, and you can see there the block of blue that is highway business. So the property is currently split-zoned, and the proposal is to remove that and make it all highway business. Taking a look at the two districts, rural agriculture is a current zoning alongside highway business, minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, and the purpose of this district is to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county while accommodating limited low-density single-family and limited commercial uses. Now, the proposed zoning district, and also the current zoning for a portion of the property, is highway business. There's no minimum lot size, and the purpose of this district is to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along our major highway corridors, where there's sufficient transportation and utility infrastructure. Now we'll take a look at the comprehensive plan. There is, I believe, three categories, again, for this one. So we have the local commercial activity center, and the purpose of this district is to provide the area with a basic mix of uses that are necessary to serve as a focal point for that community. And those that are retail nature should have a compact and pedestrian-friendly design and inner connectivity. And also, the properties in the medium-density residential category, which is to provide for predominantly single-family residential areas and accommodate planned multifamily developments with limited commercial nodes. The last category is rural residential, and this is preserved undeveloped or sparsely developed lands that were not agricultural forestry, but they significantly contribute to our recognition or impression of being in the county or having that rural character. Now we'll look how this is displayed on the map. You can see the local commercial activity center. There is centered on the intersection of Gum Branch, Roadstown, and Stateside Boulevard. The intention there is that that intersection would be a focal point for commercial activity. Then, as it goes out from that intersection, you'd have decreasing density to the medium-density residential, and then to the rural residential as kind of a gateway, and again, that impression of rural character. Take a look at the environmental conditions. You can see there's no regulated flood zones on the property, and then there is a stream that just touches the very edge there of the subject area. Take a look at reasonableness and the public interest. The proposed rezoning may be considered reasonable because there's other commercial zoning in the area. Highway business is a corresponding zoning district for the local commercial activity center, supported by a couple of policies in the comprehensive plan, again, having diversified shopping choices. It may be considered unreasonable because highway business does not align with rural residential or the medium-density residential, future land use categories, and there's a few policies in the comprehensive plan that would not support the rezoning. A planning board, and it was for October 5th, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. One applicant spoke on behalf of it, and one citizen spoke in favor of the petition, stating the development can increase roadway capacity, because when you have development come, they may have to do a TIA, and could bring roadway improvements. But no citizens spoke against it, and we've not had any petitions or statements submitted to staff. Here you can see the property's location relative there to Hog Wild, to Stateside Elementary, to the gas station there in the corner. Some common things, if you were driving along, what you might see. We'll take a little bit of a closer look here. You can see the property there relative to the intersection. And last, we'll take a look. Here is what it looks like from the intersection with your back, and staff posted a sign there, right there at the corner, so everyone there at the intersection waiting on the red light would be able to see the sign. As respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider their proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z 2023, number 28. Adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman? Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, we can now open the public hearing. We have two speakers. The first one is Jason Houston.
Jason Houston.
Houston. Mr. Houston is approaching.
For the Houston's, it's Houston.
My apologies. I wrote this down to quickly say what I need to say for your consideration on this rezone, to stay within my time limit. This rezone is approximately 45 acres. This provides a lot of positives for responsible development. As you know, the Planning Board voted unanimously to approve. I discussed in detail the planning concerns at that meeting. For one, the size of this project allows for an internal road network with limited access to both Gum Branch and Roadstown roads. DOT will control access, and any work along this corridor will require a TIA to be completed, and would require roadway improvements to comply with all of DOT encounter requirements. Speaking of traffic, per Onslow County GIS, I drew a one-mile circle from the intersection, and it listed almost 1,000 unique tracts of land. I know some of those are just open fields, but a majority of those are single-family lots. They include all of Stateside, all of Rock Creek, plus several other smaller subdivisions. And that's just what's listed today. Across the street within Stateside subdivision, I have 250 lots that we're probably going to record here pretty soon. They'll be coming online. I also have another project located on Quaker Bridge Road that's in design now. I'll add another 200 lots. Keep adding here. I also just submitted a sketch design plan to the county for the next phases of Stateside that depicts an additional 1,000 lots. Of course, all these don't appear instantly, but the point is that in the next five to 10 years, there will be more than double the number of lots in this vicinity than there is now. I suspect there are other subdivisions in the works that I'm not a party to that will also add to that total. I know this area is getting a lot of commercial pressure because I get the phone calls, so I know it's only going to increase. It's approximately seven miles from Richlands to Jacksonville down Gum Branch Road. This tract of vacant land is located right in the middle. Having a commercial area adjacent to these properties I just spoke about keeps more traffic, keeps more of the traffic local. Any trips we can reduce going down Gum Branch Road in either direction is a step forward. Otherwise, the only option for anybody out here will ever have is to add to the traffic in Richlands or Jacksonville. It just makes for good planning to have an easily accessible commercial area for people that live out here. Infrastructure, talked about it, Onwassa has capacity for this type of development. Currently, there sits an underused Onwassa sewer force main right out front. As a reminder, the Cameron Land Use Plan, even though it is a bit outdated, does identify this area as a local commercial activity center. When the Cameron Land Use Plan was drafted, I don't think anyone ever thought there'd be 2,000 homes within one mile of this intersection. Undoubtedly, someone is going to be upset about traffic, and that is understandable, but the traffic is already here. You are the traffic. The people that live here, near here, is what makes the traffic. We can give them someplace to go, or we can deny the rezone and force everybody to travel all the way to Richlands or Jacksonville for anything and everything. DOT's made some improvements out in this area. You know, they've straightened out the curve in Roadstown. They're realigning Quaker Bridge and Northwest Bridge Road, and I know they're, I think they're talking about adding a signal at Cowhorn for the buses and stuff to make those turns. Drainage, no drainage concerns. This is a large tract of land. They will have to get a stormwater permit issued by the state. None of this potential development will post any negative interactions due to runoff with any adjacent landowners. They can go straight to the river. I'll leave you with this. Within two miles of this site, there has been approximately 1,500 acres of property rezoned to R10 in the past few years. This level of density, which will eventually be developed, needs some commercial space. The county has seen fit to zone these areas as such, and has primed the area for development. It makes good planning judgment for this property to be rezoned. Otherwise, I don't believe we're planning very well. There are not too many tracts of undeveloped land at this size, at a roadway intersection, with proper utilities, with this many people now and in the future that I see as more primed for commercial development. All this is in thanks part to your leadership in county planning. For all those reasons, do we have this opportunity? I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the second and final speaker for this matter is Brandon Howard.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know that I really need to say a whole lot after what Jason just presented to you. He pretty much covered everything I have, but I'll give you what I brought anyway. I'm not a developer that saw this as a tract of land that I could purchase and an opportunity to cash in on it. I'm the son of a farmer, native Toonslo County, that purchased- that purchased this land in the late 1950s in order to expand his farm in operation. For many years, the operation was successful in generating profits that allowed for additional expansion and the means necessary to provide for his family. After the 1990s, Onslow County as a whole did not expand in farming and did quite the opposite. Farms have been purchased for housing and commercial developments resulting in a significant decline for farming operations throughout the county. We have accepted this, and we are well aware that change is often inevitable in a county that is growing as fast as ours is. We now lease this tract for row crops and operate other portions of the farm ourselves. Unfortunately, it is no longer profitable to farm this tract of land due to the substantial growth that has occurred and is still occurring on every side of us. We do not want to build homes on the land or sell it to a developer for the same purpose. We want to bring a center to the area where the residents all around us can come to for conveniences without driving five or more miles. With the amount of housing developments that have been built along Gum Branch Road between Richlands and Williamsburg Plantation, residents are currently forced to drive to one end or the other for simple conveniences. We are located dead center between the two. It is unlikely that this will significantly increase traffic on Gum Branch or Roadstown as residents from southwest Piney Green, Richlands, et cetera, are not going to drive here for the same conveniences that are already located near them. This will also be an internal development with only one or two access points along Roadstown Road. In closing, my wife and I just built our final and forever home just 1,100 feet from the tract. 100% of the drainage from the tract flows through a branch that passes behind us within 80 feet of the back corner of our house. There will be no runoff onto anyone else's property. We do plan to retain several sections of the property for lease that will allow us to remain in control of the quality of appearance that matches the awesome community around us. Thank you all for your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, we can now close the public hearing and proceed to the board's deliberation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Rezoning approved. At this time, I need to have a few words from Mr. DeSelm.
Yes, and I apologize for not doing this earlier. In the P R Z, P R E Z 2023 00026, the Chorus Code for rezoning, there was a motion to approve it that did not pass. By implication, that means it fails, right? But we would like a positive motion to that effect. So, if there's a motion to deny it, that way the consistency statement that accompanies denial is also affirmatively passed, so.
Which motion are you talking about?
The second one.
The second one.
Chorus?
Yes.
So, we need a motion to deny that rezoning.
That's correct.
So, do we have a motion to deny?
I make a motion.
P R E Z 2023 00026.
I make a motion to deny that rezoning request.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of denying that rezoning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Aye.
So, four, three. Motion passes.
Craig. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we are moving on from the rezoning and to general items. And Mr. Smitherman, I believe you have a resolution you'd like to present, and I think that would be followed by Mr. Warren reading that resolution.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This resolution was requested by quite a few of our board members as they became aware of significant proposed home insurance increases statewide, but particularly burdensome here in Onslow County, where average homeowner rates will go up from a stated percentage anywhere from 45 to 99% over current costs. And there's quite a few of our board members, including myself, traveling to Raleigh next week to appear at that public hearing. And Mr. Warren will read the resolution opposing the action of the Commissioner of Insurance to increase insurance rates statewide.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. The resolution states, State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Resolution 24-001, Resolution Opposing Unfair Property Insurance Increases. Whereas Onslow County is in the homeowner territories number 120, 140, and 160, and whereas the North Carolina Rate Bureau has filed a request for increased base rates that will be reviewed by the North Carolina Commissioner of Insurance in the coming weeks. And whereas the territories that Onslow County is located have proposed rate increases of 43%, 71.4%, and 99.4%. And whereas homeowners in these territories currently pay base rates that are already four and five times higher than the base rate in many counties in central and western North Carolina. And whereas homeowners' insurance represents a significant financial burden for our property owners, and this burden has a negative impact on family budgets and the regional tourism industry. And whereas there is a significant disparity in homeowners' insurance rates across North Carolina, and this disparity is unfair to homeowners in coastal North Carolina, including Onslow County. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners strongly encourages the North Carolina Commissioner of Insurance to not only reject the proposed 43%, 71.4%, and 99.4% increase in territories number 120, 140, and 160, but also reject any and all homeowners' insurance rate increases and encourage the commissioner to work toward a fairer homeowners' insurance rate structure for coastal North Carolina. Be it further resolved that the North Carolina Insurance Commissioner is encouraged to work on behalf of all citizens to ensure that any proposed insurance rate increases are fair and reasonable and do not place an undue burden on the families and senior citizens in the state. Be it finally resolved that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners encourages all homeowners in coastal counties to join Onslow in traveling to Raleigh on Monday, January 22nd, and to make contact with the Department of Insurance to protest the requested rate increases. Adopted this the 17th day of January 2024. And it is respectfully.
Second. They stole your thunder, Mr. Warren. So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. So, Mr. Smitherman, we'll keep you rolling.
Yes, sir. The next item is going to be presented by our Health Director, Chrissy Hoover, who is going to ask you to accept a grant to provide COVID vaccine, COVID-19 vaccines to the under and non-insured.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. In April of 2023, the Department of Health and Human Services announced the Bridge Access Program for COVID-19 Vaccines and Treatments. This program provides funding to help maintain access to COVID-19 vaccines for uninsured and underinsured adults through the existing public health infrastructure. While many health insurance plans, including Medicare and Medicaid, will cover COVID-19 vaccinations without cost sharing, approximately 25 to 30 million uninsured adults or underinsured adults may lose access to affordable COVID-19 vaccinations as the vaccine becomes commercialized. The CDC's Bridge Access Program provides COVID-19 vaccines at no cost for adults 19 years and older that do not have health insurance and adults whose health insurance does not provide a zero-cost coverage for COVID-19 vaccines. This funding, in the amount of $133,022 from the North Carolina Division of Public Health, provides operational support to the local health department. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider acceptance of this funding in the amount of $133,022 for Agreement Addendum 719, Bridge Access Program for COVID-19 Vaccines at the Onslow County Health Department, and authorize the Health Director to sign any necessary documents on behalf of the county. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
So, move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just had a question. Do we have any data on how many people this represents as far as 19 years, those 19 years of age who don't have health insurance or those adults whose health insurance does not provide zero-cost coverage? Do we know the numbers?
Nationally, 25 to 30 million. Locally, not necessarily. No, sir. What I can tell you, though, is that with the funding that they have allocated to us, the $133,022, we would use those to provide the expense of the vaccine. Those vaccines are now costing us between $75 and $114 our cost and would also cover the cost of the administration of the vaccine. So, the staff time and supplies that are necessary to keep that provision of access open at all times to the citizens of Onslow County.
So, up until now, we've been covering the cost? You said the county's been covering the cost?
Up until now, the federal government has been buying the vaccine and providing those vaccines to the public through the health departments. Now that they have become commercialized, we have to purchase those vaccines, and so that changes the cost that we would be passing on to those who receive it.
I have a question for you because my background is very different from probably everybody sitting up here in the room. I'm curious to know, how much money does the county receive from the federal government or any other entities for other options to fight disease? I mean, I happen to be somebody who doesn't believe in traditional medicine, and I'm wondering if there's an equal or, you know, close to amount of money that comes in to educate people on other options like for wellness or other ways to fight disease? Do we get money like that? And do you know what kind of money that is?
The Health Department does receive various allocations. Most of the funding that we receive comes through the North Carolina Division of Public Health. Much of that money is passed through from the federal government. Without knowing this ahead of time and without having that prepared, it would be very difficult to say. What I can say is that there are other federal funds, such as WIC funding, that we use to educate mothers about best options for feeding your infant, good nutrition during a pregnancy. We promote breastfeeding with that. So, there's federal funds that are used for education in that regard. There's also money that comes through the Division of Public Health that we use to address the needs that we find in our community from the Community Health Needs Assessment, an assessment that we conduct every four years and that we are doing again this year. There is a very small amount of funding for that. I mean, it's probably less than $30,000 a year. And so, that really primarily funds the health educators that put on classes within our department and that also work with our community partners to respond to the needs that they think that we have.
So, you would say it's probably an unequal kind of funding in general? If you, I mean.
It's very difficult to say that because we get millions of dollars whenever we look at WIC. So, it depends on how you apply that definition.
In regard to fighting disease, like it's more pharmaceutically funded than not.
I would say that immunizations are a very important public health initiative that have been around for decades. It's one of the best public health outreaches that we have and one of the best ways that we have to prevent disease and one of the best ways that we have to minimize the appearance of clinical illness in those who end up with a disease.
Okay.
One other question. Do we have the same kind of program for the flu? Because I've heard the flu is running rampant this year, and do we have the same kind of grant for the flu?
We do not receive funding directly for the flu. What we do receive is funding for children who might not have coverage, and so that would give those populations flu vaccine. But for uninsured adults, we don't necessarily get a pot of money that looks just like this. There will be options that might be available to them, but that would be very dependent upon risk factors that they might have. But certainly, we will help navigate individuals to flu vaccine if they need it. You're right. We are right in the middle of respiratory viral season. We have just witnessed a huge decrease in flu numbers this past week. But the thing that goes with that is that flu hospitalizations are still very high. There were 50 adult flu deaths that were added to the numbers this week across the state. And so, really, getting a flu vaccine is equally important with COVID because those two respiratory illnesses are more present in the environment. They're circulating more. They're easier to pass during this drier winter season. Respiratory hygiene and, you know, good hand hygiene, all the things that we have done in the past to control respiratory viral illness is still very important today.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying.
Was there a motion?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I guess just one other thing I want to say. It's not a question for you, but just on general principle, I personally, because I believe differently in healthcare, and I don't love the fact that we are going to be allocating, or we can use it to educate people and advertise for this kind of thing. As a taxpayer myself, I am not in favor of receiving tax dollars to push something which I feel like is kind of propaganda. So, sorry for the rest of the Health Board. I'm going to not vote for it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
No.
The motion carries six to one. Thank you, Ms. Hoover.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for our next item, we are going to hear from our Cooperative Extension Director, Jessica Gardner, who's going to be presenting the memorandum of agreement with NC State University for our cooperative extension service.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. North Carolina Cooperative Extension was established at NC State University by federal and state legislation as part of the Smith-Leaver Act of 1914. The specific purpose of the cooperative extension service is to extend the educational services of the university across our great state. The legislation provides for a cooperative relationship among federal, state, and local county governments to ensure the needs of the community are addressed. The mission of NC State Extension is to extend research-based knowledge to all North Carolinians, helping them transform science into everyday solutions that improve their lives and grow our state. The partnership with Onslow County and NC Cooperative Extension ensures that the educational needs of Onslow County citizens are addressed with a hands-on, research-based approach in a timely manner. The memorandum of agreement between Onslow County and NC State was last updated in 2007. The agreement before you today is an updated agreement detailing the relationship between Onslow County and NC State. This is a statewide initiative to modernize verbiage and give the document a sleek, detailed look. There is no change to the responsibilities of the county or the state. It is respectfully asked that the Board of Commissioners accept the proposed memorandum of agreement and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're moving on to appointments now, and I believe we're going to turn the appointments over to Ms. Outruck for that.
Yes, Chairman and Board. There are, there is an appointment for the Consolidated Human Services Advisory Committee today. On June 10th, 2013, the Board of County Commissioners adopted Resolution 13-010 in order to consolidate the provision of social services and health department functions under county government pursuant to Session Law 2012-126 HB 438. The 11 members, as established by North Carolina General Statute 130A-35, shall reasonably reflect the population of Onslow County and shall include one physician licensed to practice in North Carolina, one licensed dentist, one licensed optometrist, one licensed veterinarian, one registered nurse, one licensed pharmacist, one Onslow County Commissioner, one professional engineer, and three additional seats. Dr. Carl Cardoni, General Seat Three, and Mr. Fernando Shufflebean, General Seat Four, terms expired on November 18th, 2023. Both have expressed a willingness for reappointment and have submitted citizen participation applications for consideration. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the reappointment of Dr. Carl Cardoni and Mr. Fernando Shufflebean for a three-year term expiring on November 18th, 2026, in their respective categories.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. No consent agenda items. We'll move right into item number eight, our manager's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things this evening, not only for the board's benefit, but for the public and our employees. I've had the pleasure over the last several weeks to spend a lot of time with a lot of employees and also observe the many operations that we administer here at Onslow County. Pleased to report that everything you suspect about our employees is true. They are hardworking. They care about their work. They care about their work product, and they care about the citizens of Onslow County. That is extremely evident in our Parks and Recreation Department, where we do an excellent job maintaining parks that have not seen a lot of TLC as far as capital investment over the recent decade. But we do a really good job maintaining what we have, and I wanted to salute the folks that really care for every single park we have out there and every place that our citizens have to recreate. Also want to call your attention to our Animal Services Division, Department, and the hard work they do. And many of you know firsthand that their calls are frequent. And many of you know firsthand that their calls are frequent, as well as the correspondence to you about calls they receive. And my personal observation, as well as my observation through others, is that we do a tremendously professional job in a very difficult circumstance. So many times, our animal services officers are the equivalent of social workers more than they are law enforcement personnel. As you can imagine, so many of their calls are about disputes between property owners and residents and not necessarily about the dogs themselves or the animals themselves. And they do a very professional job in administering those duties, but they also do a great job caring for the animals in our care. And I encourage you to take a look at our facilities, how they're maintained, the way we interact with the public at our animal shelter, and the good work we do on adoption and animal care. Finally, I will mention and I will thank publicly Mr. Bennett, Commissioner Bennett, for inviting me to the Sneed's Ferry Rotary Club, which I got to hear firsthand many of the things discussed this evening, and particularly the local area plan and the way that that community really holds that as the model for how they want to develop. But my takeaway from that conversation, or that meeting, was how well Mr. Bennett did conveying the work of Onslow County to our citizens in an informal environment. It was extremely educational. Passed that along to many of you personally. I know Mr. Foster since then has cribbed some notes from Commissioner Bennett. But I encourage you all to look for those opportunities. And I also say to the public, any opportunities that may present where I may speak to public or civic organizations, I am certainly available and willing and excited to talk about the positive future of Onslow County going forward. So thank you very much for the time, Mr. Chairman. Hope everyone has a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I appreciate it. We'll start, Commissioner Scott, if you'll start us off this evening.
Well, so will. Well, tonight, you see once again that Iowa shut down. It's what I wanted to do because the county manager and I have discussed the issue in detail of what we should have been doing. The county manager is doing an outstanding job, and he had some input that would give our contractors and also the citizens the time that maybe the contractor would have rescinded his application to where he wouldn't have to wait now just six months. There's options that he could have took, but he was not given the opportunity. Now, if he knows it, then that's different. But I have a right as an elected official to ask questions about what is going on and what should be going on. We had a commissioner that stated in 2014, Sneed's Ferry had a plan. I'm not putting a blame on anything. The plan has been ignored. Would we be in the shape that we was in tonight if that plan had have been enacted into the county plan? We may never know now. The issue is, I should have a chance to say what I need to say if I'm concerned about it, and I should have an opportunity to ask questions. Iowa shut down tonight. I'm very disappointed because the rest of the board wants to keep me quiet. We failed the citizens of Sneed's Ferry. Previous boards, I don't think the current, the current some of us have because we're trying to bring it to your attention. You know, we do have some great employees. There's no doubt about it. But we've got to protect and serve the citizens of Onslow County. And most of them, we're shutting down an industry, an industry that makes the county The options was there. Our contractors should have the opportunity to hear what their options are. Thank you, and I hope y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This week, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is holding a series of steering committee meetings in Raleigh. I plan on attending the Public Education Steering Committee. I think Commissioner Scott will be attending the Public Safety Steering Committee, and I think you have one as well, don't you, Lisa? Tax and Finance for Commissioner Carpenter. So we'll be in Raleigh talking about these issues with commissioners from across the state and looking into what we can advocate for on the part of all the counties of North Carolina for the good of all our people. Also, this upcoming month, we look forward to the events locally as we celebrate Black History Month. Onslow County Government, I think, is having a day to celebrate Black History. I think I got an email on that, but I don't have the date right on top of my head, so I apologize for that. But keep your eyes and ears open for all the events that'll be taking place for Black History as we celebrate the achievements of African-Americans to America. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know about y'all, but I've had a long day. I'm ready to go home. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Carpenter?
I was gonna say something similar. Thank you. I think I've done enough talking for the night, and have a blessed night.
Thank you. Commissioner Buchanan?
I want to try to keep it short, but there's some things I need to cover. But what I'll do is at our next meeting, I'll really get elaborate on it. The manager already touched on it. Talk about Parks and Recreation. We'd be kicking this can down the road about sports complex. It's time to get off these feet here and get started. We need to do something, and I know that the manager's gonna probably bring something up in our meeting that we're gonna have at the end of this month, but we need to do something about the sports complex. If we look at Brunswick County, they got a beautiful facility. It's something like that we need to be looking at for Onslow County. The other thing is, we need to do a resolution for the Corson sales tax. We've been kicking that thing around, but we need to go ahead and get a resolution done in March, and I'll explain more to that later on. The other thing is, you talk about our employees. You've heard me talk about the employees many, many times. We need to do another fair market analysis. It's got, and we need to bring it up to the fair market analysis, not bring it up three quarters of the way, but bring it all the way up. Our employees are very important to us, and they're what runs the county. These commissioners, we just oversee it. They run the county. They do everything they can for us, and they keep things running smooth. And it's time for us to look out for them. And just like looking out for our citizens, we need to do more for the citizens. The Corson sales tax will help, and so will the sports complex for their children. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Vice Chairman Knapp?
Just a couple of things before I get started. I've been asked by a couple of citizens and some people regarding the TRASC project. And if Mr. DeSelm, if you can elaborate the status on the TRASC project right now, if you would, please.
Yes, sir. So as you may recall, this board back in April of 2022 passed a economic incentive package for TRASC to build a medical office building as well as some retail and restaurant buildings. Fifty thousand square foot medical office building as well as a 10,000 square foot retail buildings would be constructed. And if they did that and they employed 100 employees at certain rates, then the sales price, what we sold it to them for of $928,500 would not have to be paid back as long as they continued to earn those or make those benchmarks. Obviously, there's not a building out there right now. I think we all can see that when we come in. They have two more years from this April to get a building constructed. Otherwise, they're gonna have to start paying back the county for the purchase price. In the meantime, they are paying taxes on that property. The total taxes we've received this year were $6,109.58. So they are having to pay those taxes, but they have that four-year grace period before payments begin. If they don't build those buildings, then we'll get paid for the property.
It sounds like a no. That's a win-win for the county. And, you know, some of this stuff, the reason why I bring it up, and I wanted him to explain it because he's more elegant with his words and he has more knowledge on this, is to make sure that the public is aware that this is not dragging, this is a continuing process. And I know you met with Mr. TRASC about three weeks ago. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Smith, and I met with him. What I understand to be the process is, is they have to get an anchor tenant before they actually construct the buildings. He's in the process of trying to obtain an anchor tenant. He knows that if he does not obtain one and doesn't build the building, then he has to pay for the land. But he's in that process. He's had good talks with folks, and we hope to know some more by the end of March, is what my understanding is, as to whether the prospective tenant is actually gonna come to fruition or not. If not, he's gonna have to move on to somebody else or, again, buy the property and pay for it all.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. That was from my knowledge, too, because I know I spoke with you earlier, Mr. Smith, and I called you Brett as well. Just a couple of other quick things. First of all, Chrissy, great job at the Health Department. I'm kinda like Miss Carpenter here. I was for the shots, but I don't know so much now.
I wasn't for the shots.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Oh.
You were, I was for the shot, not you.
Yeah.
And I've had the COVID shot. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I had the COVID shot and a booster and all that, but I don't know, maybe I'm getting old and just getting paranoid. I don't know. But I just want to thank you for the great job you're doing with that because I know people out there rely on that COVID shot, and they need that COVID shot, and they believe in it. And so I admire you for getting this funding for it and to continue moving on with the Health Department, so. You heard the insurance rate? I think that's big. The chairman and myself and Mr. Smith have been planning on leaving on Monday morning to be up in Raleigh. I think, Paul, you're going to, and Mr. Buchanan is going as well to voice our concerns at Raleigh about the insurance rates. From a personal standpoint, I noticed my insurance rate got jacked up when I started to make my premium, my payments, and they changed from one month to the next month, and my payments went up $190 for my car insurance and my home insurance. And when I called my insurance company as to why they were raised, they said, well, North Carolina has the highest rate of insurance in the 50 states, and it was an adjustment that we made of about 30%. And so now I'll be looking for another carrier for my insurance, and I will not be using the one that I've been using for like the 30 past years. But, so that's something that we are doing as commissioners, and I know all of us have been briefed on this insurance rate, and we're gonna try everything we can that they'll listen to us, and hopefully, you know, it's not the insurance agents that are doing this, it's the lobbyists for the insurance companies. So let me get that straight. They have nothing to do with this. They're lobbying for the increase in the insurance rate. So kinda go easy on your insurance guy or woman, whoever you use, because it's not their fault. We heard about the sales tax, which is good. I think Mr. Buchanan brought that up. You know, there's a lot of negativity out here right now with some of these people and some people saying things that are saying things that they're misinformed, okay? But let me make something clear as a commissioner. You know, I don't know anything about the Board of Education, okay? That's not my bailiwick. We can't get involved with whatever issues the Board of Education may or may not have, okay? So when I get phone calls from people and they're saying, you need to look into this, you need to, no, I don't. I look into things that involve the county in terms from a board's perspective. That's why they have Board of Education members that are elected to do what they need to do for the administrative staff. We don't tell them what to do, they don't tell us what to do, we don't get involved in their business unless it's funding, because we're part of a funding formula, and they don't get into our business. So I just want to make that clear to people because when I get text messages from somebody I don't know, like an anonymous number that's not in my phone book, you know, my phone log, I'm not gonna answer it, especially if you don't identify yourself. Why? Because I don't know if you're some solicitor or if you're some, whatever it might be. I'm just not gonna throw my answers out there for somebody and give them information if I don't know who you are, if you haven't introduced yourself properly. So just to keep that in mind and just be careful out there when you're talking to people, and don't let the negativity spew into your lives or whatnot. Just kinda stay positive because you're gonna start to hear a lot of it come out lately, and I think it's disgusting, I really do. I want no part of it, I don't wanna hear it, I don't even wanna discuss it. And when it comes to Board of Education stuff, that's with them, and they have their own issues to deal with. One thing about animal control that Mr. Smith has touched on, recently I've been, I guess we've been busy on this animal control stuff. There've been some things that have gone on. Not everybody's going to be happy with animal control in terms of how they respond or what they're capable of or whatnot. But I know in a couple of instances, we had an incident involving some stray animals that are on a farm that Mr. Smith had been got involved with, with the Animal Control Director, Mr. Gabbert, and they took care of the problem. You know, it was sad because these dogs were stray and they were running around and they were causing havoc on animals, some other domesticated pets, and it's unfortunate that I think a couple of them had to be put down because they were sick. How anybody abandons an animal is beyond me. I just like, to me, it's like abandoning a child. You know, you can't do that. That's your responsibility, that's your pet, that's your family member. So, but my hat's off to you guys. I appreciate what you did. I appreciate Mr. Gabbert and his crew for doing what they're doing, and my thank you, David, I appreciate that. And the last thing is, you got early voting. Early voting starts in February. You know, I'm not gonna tell you who to vote for, but, you know, read up on your candidates. Read up on your candidates, vote your conscience, vote who you feel is capable of whatever position that they're running for. You know, just make an informed decision. Encourage people to get out to the polls. Don't tell them who to vote for, get them to just come out and vote, whether you're Democrat, you're Republican, Libertarian, or Independent. Get people and try to convince them to register to vote. Because if you don't vote and you complain about who's in office, then I don't think you have the right to complain, okay? Go through the process. Win or lose, vote for who you feel should be the appropriate person in Board of Commissioners, Board of Education, you know, the Congress, state senators, et cetera, all the way up to the president. Just make your vote count because it is important, and that's a right that you, that American citizens have earned, and take advantage of it. Other than that, I just wanted to say thank you to all the people for putting up with us. It's been a long time. It's 8:25. It's time to go home and eat a late supper and kick back and just watch some TV. So I just wanted to thank everybody for showing up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. You can go and watch some television. You can watch the Tar Heels at nine o'clock take on Louisville Cardinals.
Except that.
Coming off their big win in the recent few days over the Wolfpack in Raleigh. Sorry for all you Wolfpackers, but just had to say that. Still love you, Mr. Price. So just put that out there. Sorry, Mr. DeSelm. Couple of things.
Go nose.
It's been a busy, busy few days. Couple of calls from individuals that said, could you come talk to us or let us speak to you about some things we like to try and do in the community? So I took those calls, went and visited a gentleman yesterday, and he said, I'm not asking for any money. I can do what I do without funds. I just need someone to help me find a way to do it. And what he was referencing was violence that's taken in place in his community, and he owns a business, and he wants to find a way. How can I take the skills I have in my business and get our youth here where I can teach them the trade or give them the opportunity to learn something besides what they're seeing take place in going out and committing crimes, violent crimes, robberies? And I thought, that's huge. That's huge for him to want to do that. And he just wants to find someone that can partner with him to bring this, these ideas to fruition. The reason I share that tonight is I have a few people that I'll be able to contact and see if we can get them together working on that. But for anyone that is out there that says, hey, let's find the means that we can get our kids into businesses, quasi apprenticeship or something, I'm not sure, but just to get them, put tools in their hands. I'm gonna say how he shared it with me, and he said, I've got a place, I'd love to put a building on it, and if nothing else, we get young people out there. I can teach them how to weed eat, I can teach them how to mow grass, I can teach them how to break down the weed eater engine, put it back together, fix it, put it to work. The same thing with the lawnmower, the same thing with the chainsaw. I can bring them to my shop, I can show them if a man can put it together, a man, another man can take it apart and put it back together. He said, put their hands on wrenches, get them to work on, they may find something that they enjoy, and that can create a career for them instead of following others that are doing wrong. And I thought, that's the community Onslow County has. That's a man that wants to make a difference. He's not asking for anything, he's wanting to find a way to get this out there. So I appreciate his wanting to do that, and we're gonna help make him successful in this with others that are trying to do the same thing in our community. Spoke yesterday, Mr. Smith mentioned I spoke at the Kiwanis Club yesterday, and I did use some of the information Commissioner Bennett used at the, I think it was the Sneed's Ferry Rotary. And then I spoke with Mr. Smith with some things that are coming up, so worked to put all that information together and shared that with them, and lo and behold, comprehensive plan and zoning was in it. Been an event. Been an eventful night with comprehensive plan and zoning. I think it's important to know that 15 years ago, Mr. Smitherman was here for a few, little bit. Did we have zoning in place in Onslow County back then?
I believe we're in the final stages of implementing it when I left.
So, it was, it was something that was just coming to fruition in Onslow County, that we're trying to, to, to put our arms around what's going on, and it's been several, many, many years since we've updated that comprehensive plan, and I'm, I'm glad Mr. Metcalf was able to give us an update on that, that we're six to eight weeks away from seeing that, and I'm sure that the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan is incorporated into that as well. And he mentioned he's gonna get out and speak to stakeholders, and we wanna make sure that the, the residents of Sneed's Ferry get an opportunity to, to see that and what that looks like and how it works with where they're at. Also, met with some ladies, I can't, they're gonna hit me for not remembering the name of the organization, but they've been working and trying to, to find a way to get, get out the vote. They're nonpartisan, and they don't care, they just want to see the numbers in Onslow County increase in getting out the vote, and really getting into, to, to our youth again. It's your civic duty. You know, it's, it's not just your right, but, you know, it's a duty to go out and, and vote, so I thought that was important. And the biggest thing that I want to share with all that I just said, because this tips off in 29 minutes, is that we had, I'll get you there. We had a large number of people come into the chambers tonight to speak how they felt about a potential rezoning in their community. Had the opportunity to speak with folks at Kiwanis and what they do in the community and how they can work in the community. They already dropped 15,000-plus dollars into the community supporting kids. I get to speak to a gentleman that doesn't want a dime from anybody, he just wants help to go out and help the community. I speak with another couple that they really don't want money, they just want to get out in the community and get them active in doing things in our community. So, right here, living in America, right here in Onslow County, you get to see the grassroots of what makes us tick, what makes us operate, what makes us successful, is because here at this level, we can voice our opinions and get a decision in our favor or not in our favor. But you're able to have that, that civil discourse, discourse, and discuss it and make decisions. And then when those decisions are made, we all can shake hands, say thank you, or I didn't agree with you, but I appreciate this opportunity, and that is what is, is great. And you witnessed it tonight, and everybody's gonna watch this on G10 over the next several weeks are gonna have their opinions on how things went, but you know, welcome. This is the grassroots of your local government. This is where your voice is heard. Sometimes it'll be in your favor, sometimes it will not be in your favor. And I'll close with this. Mr. Houston has been in here before. He has walked out that door where what he wanted or was here on behalf of did not fall in his favor. He has come back tonight, he is presenting on something else, and tonight, it fell into what he was in here to do. So, that's how the system operates, and we appreciate for having the opportunity to be a part of it. We thank you for your participation. We look forward to it, and above all, the manner in which we conducted ourselves as citizens at the podium tonight was exemplary, and that's how it's supposed to be done. And in this forum, we are not gonna crumble into chaos. We're gonna continue to work for the people of Onslow County in a very formal manner that is respective of all opinions. With that being said.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. Good night.